Call to order, well, I just did that roll call. Erica, you wanna do that?
Yes, um, we have Tom Devine, uh, Arlene Zorgman.
Yes.
Jean Christopher.
Yes.
Lauren Seeley.
Yep.
Um, Molly O'Donnell.
Here.
Lisa Gallinari.
Here.
Kendra Daniels.
Here.
And Tracy DeFrancesco.
Here.
Alright, number two on the agenda, approval of minutes from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Motion.
One, okay.
Do you have any discussion?
I just have, I have a question. On number five, which is development and budget updates under Christmas, it's just, I need to understand this in my mind. It says targeted to finish November of twenty twenty-three, but then it says, we'll get people pre-leased before November of twenty twenty-four, which is a year later, is that correct?
Uh, should be probably.
Pre- uh, leased up probably. Like, being leased up within the year.
Okay.
Well, no, pro- uh, I think it should be twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, they should both be twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Because it's gonna be finished at the end of November twenty-three. At the end of November twenty twenty-three, you'll lease it up, okay? Any other discretion or changes? Alright, without one change, let's have a vote, uh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Staying, no, alright, motion passes. Alright, number three, public invited to be heard. See, I'm, I'm just watching. You always, you always get them, you always do. Alright, let's.
It holds my breath that you weren't gonna back out.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna move, uh, six A and B. Oh, man, I've got a headache. Let's move on to six A and B, um, items for input by the LHA Board of Commissioners, or for the Board of Commissioners, HCB admin plan.
So, um, every year, we, um, are, well, we used to, every year, update the admin plan to incorporate regulatory changes and policy changes. The policy that we're operating under right now is the twenty seventeen admin plan. There's been a lot of changes, so this just updates the regulatory changes, and then some, some changes in policy. The Housing Authority can make, um, policy decisions at certain places in the admin plan. And so, um, we've made minor changes, a couple of significant changes with the policies. The first policy, major policy, is how we handle, um, requests for adding additional people into the household. We are finding that, um, we're, we'll house an elderly person, and all of a sudden her, their, their daughter and grandkids are there. So then we have to up the, the voucher size, the amounts that we subsidize go up. So the changes, um, kind of go through who we will allow to move in, and if it affects the, the voucher size. So that was a significant, um, change. Regulatory change was, um, virtual, um, pre- briefings due to COVID. So that's all been, um, implemented into it. We use the admin case, um, admin plan, which is a really good admin plan, and we just insert our policies as, as needed and when required.
Can we back up just a minute to the one you talked about before? Are you limiting how many people are go- can actually get in, or are you allowing the people to?
So, so there are certain people that we will allow to move in. We will allow, uh, a live-in aide, but what we're finding is a live-in aide is the daughter, and the daughter has a husband and, and children. And so, this kind of limits that. We will give a bedroom for the, the live-in aide, which is a regulatory requirement, but, um, we will not increase the, the bedroom size to accommodate the, the children, which means that if it overcrowds the unit, they can't, they can't move those individuals in. Foster care, fi- when we approve the, the, the new, the new children moving in, if it overcrowds the, the voucher, we will allow it. And before, we were, they were allowing those people to move in and increasing the voucher size. And so this kind of, and, um, we won't deny them, um, for grandkids, for, um, a spouse or a significant other, that's another change. Significant others, so a lot of people are moving in boyfriends, or girlfriends, and then they move out, and then another boyfriend or girlfriend. So we've, we've, we've limited it to, um, a spouse or a significant other. And in Colorado, a significant other is, um, or domestic partner.
Partner, yeah.
Yeah.
There's paperwork.
There's paperwork, so they'll have to, they'll have to verify that they're a domestic partner before we will allow them to, to join the family.
Cause if they're moving in more people and you're expanding voucher sizes and subsidies, you're taking away from another family who could use a voucher.
That's correct, and, and we're not here to subsidize the whole generation of, of people. So it just kind of tightens up that, that area.
So, I know the question has come up before, I think at, at council meetings about, what are we doing to accommodate those children that are aging out of foster care? Are we doing something?
You know, we haven't had, uh, we haven't had any.
Requests?
Requests for, for that. Since I've, I've been here, I don't think that's, that's an issue, and that's something that we would look at at the time.
And there are specific vouchers for kids aging out of foster care?
There's a, there's, there's a program. There's help for.
They get a, what do you call it, a person to guide them through this process?
Yeah, they get like a caseworker.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't.
Lightech even has provisions for those who's aged up within five years, so.
I will also just mention, this is not related to the voucher necessarily, maybe, but, um, so we have the Element Properties has the purchase option for the rest of the land around the suites, um, outside of what's going to be Xenia, which we'll figure out in a second with our development updates. Um, but they're very preliminarily talking to Elder about what used to be Attention Homes, about maybe having a section or a smaller building that is focused on youth. So maybe those aging out of foster care, maybe youth experiencing homelessness, something like that. They're, it's very preliminary, but they're in talks about the opportunities there.
So like a boarding house may be possible, something like that?
Well, it could be tied to a voucher, the, uh, foster kids voucher program. It could be tied, I mean, Elder has a whole, whole arm of this.
We don't, we don't have specific vouchers for, um, kids who are going out of foster care.
It added to a grand opening for Maker Housing, and they had a couple for, where some kids, um, caraway homes. And it seemed to me like it's not as, it's not a huge need, uh, where we need like an entire, you know, neighborhood or development focused on it, but it is something we can offer. We do have, we have a lot of community partners who could let us know as things change, but, yeah, that would be nice to have something like that.
Can't think, that's where the, those were the biggest changes.
So we struggled with how to present this, because the admin plan, how many pages do you think the admin plan is?
Oh, thousands.
Thousands. And it hasn't been updated in six, five years, so.
Yeah.
The idea is, so we tried to, this is, um, what Tracy put together is really just a bullet summary of the major changes, and then there's track changes for days. It really is just trying to get things up to date, and then going forward, we're gonna make this affect, so this would go to the LHA Board October eighteenth, to make it effective January first, and then we wanna do this every year, which would be smaller, not as such of a lift, um, easier to explain what kind of changes are coming.
And, and the more I thought about January first, if we can get it probably November first and just do it every November, um, because there's so many changes that, that we need to implement as soon as we can, especially the family stuff, and there's, there's lots of little, little things, um, but there's a lot of like remote briefings and, and stuff. Those are all regulatory changes.
Got a question on the, the HQS inspections, uh, you could do it remotely, through video streaming? Is it just if it's a remote location, or if we have COVID again, can we do?
We can do that.
Implement that as well?
Yeah.
Okay, right.
Yeah, that, we, and, and our policy is that we don't do that.
Yep.
Right now, but if that ever changes, we can change it to, to do it remotely.
Yeah, I mean, it's a kind of a backup, but preferred method is, is being there live and seeing it all, okay, alright.
Something else that we're exploring, speaking of HQS, um, you know, one, one part of compliance that we've had a complaint about at BCHA is, is the number of inspections units have to go through, and the number of times residents are bothered by, the Lightech wants to do an inspection of your unit, the, um, Home Consortium wants to do an inspection of your unit, HQS for the voucher program has to do an inspection, so it'd be nice if we could get everyone to agree to accept one inspection done by one of these people.
Right, and, and HUD allows that, um, and that's in our policy, that we will accept other agencies' inspection.
But not, not necessarily our partners, our funding partners.
Well, well, it used to be, cause, um, if Jaffa did an inspection, when Boston Capital came in and Jaffa had done it, they were fine. And it's been done, and, and as long as we passed it, they were fine, yeah. And, and in the policy.
It might depend on the investor, too.
Yeah, and in the policy, it, it does say that we'll accept their, their inspection. And that will repay a consultant to do our inspections, and that will eliminate a lot of.
If we can get, if we can convince everybody else to accept it.
Hours, yeah.
Yeah.
Or even the, just the HQS ones are very thorough.
Right.
I mean, if the light plate isn't screwed on properly, you fail. So if they will accept those, that, then that's good. But, yeah, that's one thing that, that we're struggling with, is trying to get all of our folks to, the guidance to come down from the federal government to say, hey, everyone should just take these inspections and be good, so hopefully that'll happen.
Yeah, it's building credibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, they need to build credibility and be good.
So something else I wanted to mention on this is, we've been talking recently about where we are with the HCD program, cause we've been fully staffed, um, and we have a new compliance manager. She's been here for six months now, doing this focused work. We really are in a place where a lot of voucher holders have been used to a certain type of, I don't wanna say treatment, because it's really just processing, the way their files are processed.
Leniency.
Yes, leniency. And we are tightening things up to make sure that we don't get in trouble and they don't get in trouble, and we are getting a lot of calls and complaints right now about that. Almost all of it, or all of it, it really ties to that right now. So if you all get any calls, if you hear about issues, it, I've, I can provide some examples, but really it's, um, tightening up procedures.
Okay, yes.
It, it's for the best, it's what, we're in this wave, right? Where people are like, but what, it used to be done this way, and it should, when people, you know, it should be a wave, but we're in it.
The complaints I've gotten were, oh, you know, it started exactly like what it used to be, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
And, and I didn't know that you were going through all this, so, but I was, you know, there's gotta be a reason, you know, blah, blah, you know, and I, um, and, uh, some of it has been complaints about repetition, like, yeah, I did that, now I gotta do it again, kind of thing. So it's probably follow-up on the original documentation or whatever. So, yeah, I, as long as I, yeah, I can appease some of that.
Right.
And, so, so, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of things. We're, I've got four files on my desk with, I'm reporting them, so we're, we're, we're finding, we're finding a lot of stuff that just wasn't paid attention to. Yeah. And so, um, we're, we've entered into a lot of promissory notes for, for that payments. We've, um, were, they were allowing people, um, reasonable accommodations when they weren't disabled. So those are, those are the types of things that we're kind of tightening up on, and it's not making some people happy. And, um, in Lightech, um, when, when there was a project-based voucher, we would normally supply Lightech the information, and now they're having to do it again through Lightech. And that's where, that's where the confusion is, is coming.
Right.
Um, they have to be in with us, they have to be, be with the Lightech properties. And add as for Meadows with the recent, it could get, it's gonna be triple, yeah.
We are finding potential fraud, too. And we're doing this.
Not surprised, and, not surprised.
We say potential, we're quite sure, but we just, you know, have to take short steps, don't we, dude?
Yeah, and, and we're, we're including at least in, in those investigations.
And when you say potential fraud, it's on the part of the tenant?
Yeah.
So.
That's also that, okay.
Well, I have one other question, too. So on the, the criminal conviction records after admission, how does that work? Cause we, we have something on our application, right, that you ask if they have any felonies or anything like that on their record, so if this comes to light after the fact?
So that's, that's if they committed a crime after they were housed.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking, okay, alright.
So, we can't, there's, there's regulations.
Yeah, well, no, my, my concern was like they had certified earlier that they didn't have any convictions, or they had disclosed their convictions, and then we find out later that they did have something and they lied to us. So this is like, we admitted them, they had a unit, and then they committed something, so we can't, right.
We do a background check on, on everybody before we, we house them. HUD is getting pretty, um, getting involved in, in that. They, they find that by doing that, it is discriminating against certain cultures.
Right.
And so, if we find that most of the people that are being denied are, you know, Hispanic, then we need to look at our policies again, but that's not what is happening right now, but, but they're focused on that.
So if they move in and then they've committed something after they've moved in, are they required to report that?
No.
So you wouldn't know?
We wouldn't know unless the, um, landlord has contacted us that a person has been arrested, um, for drug, you know, if it's, if it's for drug-related activity, um, or a violent activity on the property, then we can, um, terminate their vouchers, and we have done that, um, in the past. But that's, that's when we would have notified.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do background checks at recircitations, for example.
Yeah, that's costly, yeah, yeah.
Anything else on the admin plan?
If you want more, if you want to see, if you want to see this, it's online. It's online, you can go, it's online, yeah.
The format of it is literally like twenty-word documents stringed together, and that's what an admin plan is, which kind of blew my mind.
Yeah, and it's, it's policy changes and regulatory changes, so you can go online and, and get that.
Really? Cause it's out for public review right now, so those are available. Is that right, those are available today?
That should, well.
It's on the Housing Authority's website?
It should be today, I, I sent it to Erica yesterday, so it should be today.
She's on it.
That's the feedback you normally get on a public review like that.
Well, the last one was five years ago, so I'm not sure. Probably not very much.
Not very much.
It's really, it's really technical, it's very much regulatory reading, um, and then it's in this horrible format, so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm updating the admin plan to include all of these, and we'll put that online. That's just a big endeavor, so I, I don't suspect that it will be online until.
Okay.
If you want some reading, it's, it's written for me.
If you've got some luck, you can.
There's not reading material, actually.
But having access to that when somebody calls, um, because it goes over all of the regulations.
Yep.
So, so if you ever have a question. And it's indexed, so you can get to the answer right away? Uh, no.
Control F.
Four hundred instances. I, I find housing, control housing.
Alright, let's go on to item B, consideration of stability voucher program.
So we have received, um, information that some funding is coming down for stability vouchers, and we've kind of looked into it. If we were to apply for the stability vouchers, it's for, um, it gives, it's for homeless individuals or families, or almost, or almost homeless families. We would probably get maybe five, and it requires a whole lot of, um, counseling.
Like a permanently supported voucher?
It, it, it is, and there's really not, I've been going back and forth with, um, I think it's Boulder County, and they have indicated that their, that the continuum of care piece of it that you have to, to, um, partner with does not do the, um, counseling. And so we would have to find, they, they don't get all the funding. There, there is funding available under this, but other nonprofits apply for it to get it, too. So we would have to locate, um, somebody to do the case management on, on these vouchers.
To do it, and capacity and to have the funds.
Yeah, and have the, that has the funds to do it. They also eliminated, um, the requirement that you do not house people with drug-related activity. So you can't deny somebody that has, um, a criminal background. Drug-related, or if they're still doing, doing drugs, the, the, um, so, for instance, somebody that moves out of, um, LHA's property that has caused a lot of damage, they would still be able to be housed, as, as long as there was case management with them. So if they owe a housing authority, you still have to, to consider them. If they have a criminal background check, or criminal background record in drug-related activities, you can't deny them for that. It's just something that I don't think we're in a position right now to take on. We don't have the, the staff capacity.
The funds.
Or the funds.
Community partners.
Yeah, we, we don't have that. And, and if we were gonna, if there was possibility of getting a lot of vouchers, we might wanna, you know, look into, to getting those partners, but for five, it's not working. No, wouldn't it be a better idea to see how it works, than other, others?
And I don't think BCHA is going after those either, because I've heard the continuum of care piece in Boulder County, not great.
No, and, and that was my email heading for, that.
A pushman.
Yeah, that they, they can't, they, if somebody would commit to, um, the, the case management, then they, they might do that, but my, my biggest concern is putting somebody in there with that, that is known to be a drug user, and it has caused damage to another property, for hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we knowingly put those into a private, you know, I don't, I don't think that would settle with, with private landlords. I also think it would hurt our housing vouchers that were administering. You know, it, the reputation on a housing voucher, it has had a stigma since it was invented. And to add this to it, in, we're a relatively small town compared to, you know, Denver and, you know, what have you. I, I think, I, I agree with you, Tracy, this is, this is not the point. And they don't have the, the mechanism in place to really make it work, because we're talking about people that are not going to get consequences for fast behavior. So why are they thinking they're gonna get consequences now? When it, you do, and, and that sets, that, that goes in antithesis to society, to having society work. And I, I would love to see a program helping them, but not at, not at the cost of, um, the Section Eight program. It, it should be a separate entity. The, the whole idea behind this, from what I've read, is that HUD has determined that getting homeless off the street and into housing is the first step to, to, um, getting their addictions, um, taken care of, but I don't think housing providers are in the. No. We.
Not private landlords.
Not private landlords, no, and, and if there's no, no full-time case management.
This would be good for someone who wants to run sort of like a PSH slash boarding house.
Yes.
You know, to help people, treatment center, that's very closely aligned with community partners, but we don't have that here.
Like Tribe.
And we are not ready to do that.
That might be old concept of group, though.
Yeah, you know, yes, they're gonna keep using, they're addicted.
They are.
It's understood.
Yeah.
But also.
Okay.
Not in a private landlord's home, because they're gonna have to deal with the consequences.
So the reason we brought this to you is, first of all, we want you to know that even if we haven't jumped on all of the voucher opportunities out there, we wanna vet that and why. And for, specifically for this one and a lot of others, you have to have board approval to apply, and so we would want your input if we were gonna take it to the board. Right now, we're thinking, yeah, we're not even gonna take it to the board.
No.
I, I mean, I think it's worth bringing to their attention and saying, this is an option. We don't recommend it, because we're not prepared financially to do it, but it's something that could be done in the future, if.
Or recommended to partners.
With the stars aligned, yeah.
Yeah, or if they wanna do like an RFP or an SOQ for, for organizations to say, we would do this if the funding was there, if the support was there, but we can't take it on ourselves. And then to, to request that, get the money, get the vouchers, and then not be able to deliver, is gonna hurt our overall portfolio, too.
Right, and, um, Boulder housing partners, they're, they're administering some from, I think it's the emergency. It, it's the same, same.
Bucket.
Bucket, um, and they, they have had, um, nothing but issues with the, the support side. So without, without that component, I just have to see how that.
Well, in five vouchers, that would change.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, I'm just saying five, because that's how many vouchers that we were allocate, new vouchers we were allocated, so, um.
So maybe some point in the future, if LHA wanted to accept these vouchers and then partner with somebody like Tribe, or something who wants to do five, you know, what, like a small, five-unit or five-bedroom or something, um, we could maybe be a pass-through entity and help on the compliance side, if they do the services and, and house the people. That could be an option in the future, but we're just not there.
We're not there.
By November first, or whenever is the deadline.
No, and maybe the, maybe the program itself will work as the feedback comes in.
Right, right, right.
It seems like it's not.
See if anybody applies.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a great idea, in theory, but just not in practice.
Alright, let's go back then up to item number four, organizational updates, LHA, the Board of Elections Schedule update.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
So, for the election, we've met with, uh, the Clerk's Office. They are gonna help us administer the election even, but there's some steps we have to take. So, October eighteenth, we're taking the bylaws to the Board to allow for an election at any time of year, whenever we need to fill us a vacancy. And at the same time, there's gonna be a couple of other bylaws updates that aren't yet drafted. Coming out of the Attorney's Office, just talking about, um, the, how, how a board, a commissioner member can, can resign or be appointed. There's some fine-tuning of language that's gonna go with that. But assuming we get the bylaws updated October eighteenth, we're gonna be prepped and ready to open the application period October nineteenth. The application period, the recommended one from Clerk's Office is October. The application period, the recommended one from clerk's office is October nineteenth to November thirtieth. Set an interview date with you all, some point between December first and December ninth. Interviews by the Board of Commissioners on December tenth, that is a, that's a set date that they, that they have for that. And then appointment during the, it's a city council meeting that we would add on a board, LHA board item, to appoint on December thirteenth. So that's the recommended schedule. Um, we have an implementation plan with her, where we're gonna make sure we got our outreach information. Um, we're double checking the application, making sure that new criteria that you all agreed to put in is in there, and have that all ready to rock for October nineteenth.
So they would start January first then, right?
Yes, because these terms, we extended through the end of December for Tom and Lauren.
So that, that makes sense. October nineteenth, by.
Um, so, and with that, we are going to accept the existing applications that we already received, and we're just gonna have like a one-page addendum that we're gonna request those three applicants, well, Tom, you're one of them, to address that new criteria more specifically. So that's, that's the plan. Is, is everybody good with this? Otherwise, we already have the application written and the criteria, the, the evaluation criteria. So you all would just have to agree to a, well, I guess not everyone, because not Tom and Lauren, except for attending, but between Jean and Arlene, um, setting an interview date with the applicants between December first and December ninth. Okay. Any questions about that? Otherwise, I'll have everything prepped and ready to go. Um, there is one other thing that I'm still waiting for. She's gonna line this out for us. Um, it looks like, so we've got two seats that are filled because your, your terms both extend into twenty twenty-three. Um, we're talking about staggering the terms. So it might be three three-year terms and two two-year terms, so that we can get that staggering. So she's still, she was gonna line that out for me so you could see it, um, but I, I haven't got it yet. But that's kind of what we're thinking would make sense, just so we can kind of all.
Well, as long as it's not, it's one of
So I believe there's, that's what we were gonna double check, which I'm realizing now I didn't ahead of this, but through twenty twenty-three, or at least through June.
Um, June, June twenty twenty-three, yeah. Yeah. But a, a two-year term would be much more appetite. I've been on it for five now, so. Yeah, two-year term would be.
Okay.
That kind of coincides with the other boards too, that they've got those.
Exactly. Yeah, I think that needs to be. So we next meet also on the eighteenth, because we have this next, this advisory board meeting in the morning, the eighteenth, and the board meeting that night. So we can, I can show you that schedule, how it would, and how everybody would be in there. Well, at least Jean and Arlene, how you fit in there, and how the other term options fit in. Okay?
All right, let's go on to number five, development and project updates.
Okay, so um chatting about the let's see, what do I wanna do first? Let's do Village Place first, re-syndication. So our schedule is still on track, um, where we're trying to close on the financing um and the acquisition November of twenty twenty-three, and start construction right after. So what we've accomplished in the last month is we got the private ac, the city's private activity bond allocation, five point five million dollars. We got that assigned to this project. Um, so that's all set and ready to go. Most likely, as we develop this pro forma more, uh, we, the LHA might have to apply for the city's twenty twenty-three allocation, which comes out in January. Um, that's what happened on Aspen Meadows. I needed like one and a half years' worth to make it happen, because private activity bonds are really critical to a re-syndication. Um, so that's in place, and most likely we'll use twenty twenty-three as well. We did get approval to sell the CPWD building. So that was a weird thing. It's not platted as part of the property. It's its own property, owned by LHA. Village Place is owned by LHDC. However, for some reason that nobody can necessarily figure out, in two thousand and five, um, the CPWB building was looped into the regulatory agreement with CHASA. So we had to get their approval. We're not sure what the purpose of that was, but we got their approval. Now that we're out of the fifteen-year compliance period, um, it really doesn't matter to the investor. So if we wanted to sell off that building, we could. So the Center for People with Disabilities is um interested. So we're gonna start talking to them about whether they want to purchase. We'd have to take a couple of steps to get to that point. But it was critical to this project, because we needed to know, do we have to include this or not? So we've sorted that.
Molly, did you check the lure for Village Place to see if that was part of the, the usage?
It's, so we got, we, we reviewed that, and CHASA said you can separate the two.
Separate the two, okay.
So, so that was really good, just knowing that we don't have to renovate that building.
How much parking is associated with that building?
Do you know the number off your top?
Do you guys split that?
We have four parking spots over there now, but I've already talked to Kat. As people vacate, we slowly start moving those into our thing, so that they are vacant if we do sell, so that they, you have that whole parcel.
And if CPWD does buy it, then we could still talk about them about, you know, an agreement of some sort. To use them. Because they don't use them all the time.
Parking share, yeah.
Yeah, they don't use it. And then we, we wanted to ensure they're parking for them through our agreements, so.
Um, so the next step is we're, uh, we're meeting later this week to start, well, we've already started. We've been looking at it with the attorney and with Sarah Bott, our, our consultant. Uh, we're talking about how to approach the investor, to talk about exit options. So printed it, so I'll bring it. Maybe bring the computer, we're going to Old School today. Uh, we're talking about, the first option is the greater fair market value of the property or, or debt plus accrued interest, or write a first refusal. So we're checking out what the debt currently looks like, um, looking at valuation. I mean, it's starting to get pretty financial at this point. So we're gonna be deciding that next and approaching the investor. Um, we understand this investor is not the most responsive or helpful, so we're trying to get that started early, at UNC. Um, they're just not necessarily trying to help out a housing authority. So that's the next step. So probably by the end of the year, we should be out there, um, getting architecture and general contractor lined up to do that, all that design starting in twenty twenty-three. And that kicks off the rest of our resident process and everything.
They were asking a lot about, you know, this is how it is.
Yeah, it should be, twenty twenty-three is when we'll have our architect and, um, our beginning of and start doing those resident surveys and engagement process. That's our lesson, that's our.
I, I would start.
It wasn't your fault. Wasn't your fault.
I would suggest communicating often with them, because they really don't know what's happening, and it's making them nervous, because they were asking me, when are we gonna, when is this all starting over here? And I was like, I just know twenty twenty-three, after Kaufman Street?
Uh, not necessarily. I don't know the most recent update on Kaufman.
I thought we were gonna wait until Kaufman Street.
Well, we were going to.
Yeah, we ran into budget issues in Kaufman, but we really funded it, so um, we're probably starting in spring now.
Twenty-three?
Spring and fall twenty-three, so it could be.
So it might still be. And they are doing, they are incorporating design, uh, drainage improvements for this parking lot and that, so that's great.
So it sounds like maybe parking will, if, if the Kaufman Street and the recent occasion, all the work is not happening at the same time, parking shouldn't be disrupted too much.
Not too much. Um, I would, I would expect, I feel like we should prep people that there might be some overlap.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, start doing that now. And you're gonna have to remind them every, not every week.
But what we could do, since Kaufman's ahead of us, we could try and phase out our parking lot work to be later. I mean, we have to wait for the right season anyway, so if we start construction in January twenty-four, we wouldn't be doing parking until at least May of twenty-four.
And we're gonna have to move people out for this
Yeah.
in phases, like we did at the other ones?
Most likely. Um, it, you know, it kind of, everyone is different, but we thought that that worked pretty well, so.
Well, you're gonna lose parking anyway, because you're gonna have storage for construction and all of that, so you're gonna lose at least a third of your parking.
Temporarily, yeah.
Maybe you guys can strike up a deal with, um, DVA, because it's not full. Yeah, or maybe approach Boulder County.
Yeah.
No one's parking there.
Okay.
That might change in the winter, and as people go back to work, but I'm telling you, it's not.
Especially if we're doing parking lot work in the spring, summer, not winter.
Yeah.
Did we end up putting money, I think we ended up putting our allocation?
Our bond allocation?
No, didn't we put um our home allocation in there?
Not to Village Place.
Oh.
No, to the Spots.
Oh, to the Spots, yes.
To Spots in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we may. We can do, based on that, best went to get some spots.
Yeah, I, I, I think that that would be a, I mean, I can't speak for, obviously, organizations, but I, I think it's a worthwhile conversation.
Yeah.
Especially given all of the chatter about partnerships and
Right.
You know, that's what we're here for.
Yep.
Work together.
Part of the resident engagement too is asking who would be interested in parking in the garage long-term, if we could work that out, because that would ease the struggles on, sorry. Okay. Anything else on Village Place? Um, just, this is not necessarily, well, it's kind of development, but because we're talking re-syndication, I wanna give you an update on the flooring at Aspen Meadows. Um, so you've probably seen, we, the, the flooring was failing that was installed in, you know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, and Palace was working great with us to talk, to figure it out as a warranty item. They went in and replaced some areas and then did like a test period to make sure it was holding up. That was doing well, so they have a proposal for what could be done to fix the flooring everywhere. Um, what it comes down to was, it was a floating floor. So there's multiple properties in the front range that are in the same boat, where they put like a sound mat down and the floor floats on top. Turns out that was not designed for wheelloads of any sort, not even like an office chair. So it was failing anywhere that somebody was using a walker, a wheelchair, the office chair, like sitting in a chair.
Yeah.
So, which is just bonkers to me, but so Palace was working with their supplier, um, and the supplier said the specs say that it's not built for wheelloads. So the, the supplier is not claiming liability. So, um, we've been chatting with Palace and our insurance agency, and we are going to file a claim to have insurance pay for a permanent fix.
Claim on?
Claim on, it'll be a combo between the architect and the palace. Because they
Okay.
wrote the specs, proved the specs.
They should have caught that.
They should have caught that. It shouldn't be our responsibility to pay for it.
Correct. Your warranty period, so.
It isn't the only thing they didn't catch.
Hmm.
Yeah. Remember our talk?
Which one though?
Well, the architect approved a lot of things that shouldn't have been, and the windows was one of them. And knowing about the horns.
Well, the windows are a little different, because those actually do meet, they do meet the FAS standards.
We don't like them.
But they're.
But they do meet the UFAS standards.
The, okay, they, it, the, okay, the UFF is one thing, but the DOJ site says no. So the DOJ ADA site says no, but that's a different issue when we're talking flooring now. Okay, then we will deal with the windows when we have money to deal with them.
Well, we are going to request at Village Place that those types of windows aren't used. Some others would refuse.
No, it would have been, and, and, and the thing, if Palace had the crank windows, which would have been perfect. Instead of take out the screen and all that, just, but I'm not surprised the architect missed it, and I'm all for filing the claim, because I know the architect kind of missed it before. Um, so missing it on the floor is another, you know, go for it.
Yeah, and we're going to, it's going to be a different floor product altogether, we're doing it this route. So we're not gonna take the risk that reusing the material on site by removing the underlayment and then just getting it back. We don't want to take the risk that that doesn't end up working well with a second installation.
Okay.
So what's to be figured, so we're gonna be in the claims process for a bit. Um, what is to be figured out next is a schedule and resident, um, a plan to get the work done.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's gonna be, it's not, you know, it's not great news, but we want for it.
So the people will have to, yeah, so the people have to be moved, will have to move out of their apartments while they do this, or no?
We will, because they'll have to be moving furniture around to lay the flooring. Um, I, we don't know yet how, how many days it will take, um, if they just have to be out during the day, or if it's a, it's a hotel situation, that's still to be determined. We have to, you know, once we get our insurance claim, then we have to get the
Scheduling.
the scheduling and the installer on.
So we may have two places that are gonna be needing housing at the same time, or less.
Possibly if there's an overnight situation, depending on the disruption. So, we'll work through it. We're gonna get, we're gonna get flooring after. That's Aspen Meadows. Um, so the Hoover Land, the land next to Hearthstone and Lodge that LHDC currently owns, um, we have that RFQ that went out, uh, the period closed September fourteenth for a developer, development partner. Period's closed September fourteenth, last Wednesday. We received eight proposals. So we're looking at those now, um, and starting to evaluate. They're, they're, it's a really wide range of what's out there. So on Friday, what we're gonna talk about would be options.
I'm not even on Friday.
Okay, at some point, I will sit down with you and we'll talk about the options. Katie is doing a summary right now, of kind of what they're, what they're all proposing. It's a mix. I will say that, um, so we said that we were interested in modular. Um, we had done that tour with IndieDwell, and so we put that on there as include a modular partner. One did with the caveat that we would explore it further. All the others said modular is not cost-effective according to their opinion. So that's something we'll chat about when it's happening. Um.
So are we still, this is the one that somebody was gonna check with Stewart's on, whether or not that was?
We are going to do that still. We haven't started it. We were kind of focusing on getting these proposals in, but that's still on our list to do. Admittedly, I haven't come there yet. And working out with LHDC what the, the transfer will look like, the property asset transfer.
Yeah.
Um, so we do meet with LHDC tomorrow, and I'm gonna bring that up with them. So we'll see if, if we come to a decision, or maybe just exclude the options still tomorrow. Um, and then Chrisman, if you've been by, they're, they're excavating. So things are looking good. We have Katie from our group, I hope she's on our development side. She's attending their OACs, keeping track of everything coming through, so.
Where's that at?
About sixty-six and just east of, uh, west of the gas station at Me.
West of Me.
Okay, okay. I never get up there anymore, straight by.
So it's just a lot of dirt right now.
I love the Highland dirt. It's my favorite.
I see it really good from sixty-six.
Yeah, I love the construction stuff. That's, yeah, I'm on trailer hanging out, um, in the trailer, construction guys.
So I'm sure you guys have answered this question before, but when this gets put in, is there gonna be any kind of a sound barrier to block that traffic noise on sixty-six?
We, the buildings and the layout was designed to avoid the traffic noise at the outdoor amenity areas, and then the building, um, envelope is enough to attenuate the noise inside the building. So it won't be like a sound wall. That's really, the sound wall that would have been needed there would have been too massive. So instead, we redesigned to put the amenities towards second.
Okay.
Yeah, so they had to do a sound study, and there were just a couple of spots that, um, exceeded the HUD noise level, and it was really for the outdoor amenities. So indoors, the structure itself would bring sound levels within the HUD requirements.
Um, so otherwise for development, just, uh, we're in the concept, we're gonna go take that one. I'll, I'll jump on if you guys are still. I'll I'll jump on if you guys are still going once we're done here. Um, Tracy's gonna go talk about first, well, can we? Otherwise, concept development on affordable assisted living, we have a potential development partner. With really good, um, experience and backing by the National Development Council that we already have a contract with for for consulting. Um, so they're putting together a a letter of intent of sorts to see if we're gonna partner with it, partner with them. Um, they're interested in in doing assisted living in Colorado, they've done it a ton in Illinois. Um, and they have, oh, who's, who were they working with at the state that's interested in doing it? Was it Chaffa or D O H? I can't recall off the top of my head.
Maybe both.
Possibly.
I know Chaffa, he's been talking to Chaffa, yeah.
Um, so it's, I mean, things are looking pretty promising at the moment.
And there's a bunch of funding that just got done through Department of Housing at the state level that they're they're figuring out how to spend.
Right, so we've been. We've been on some other, um, I mean, it's so difficult right now keeping track of all of the funding sources, especially coming straight out of. Dola, D O H, D L G, the whole group. Um, but we've been including on some of those preliminary calls, what they want going forward.
Now, that one's an interesting one, because most of the funding going into it's primarily city funding. But we're gonna have to use L H A as a vehicle for city funding, so it's more of a city project. Of which we're using L H A as a vehicle because of the tax components and the lending.
So what, so what we're talking about is, um, having a a pipeline, a priority for L H A to send folks to. That's in in exchange for investment, we want a pipeline for L H A residents. And we're talking about, um, the the afford, the assisted living providers, the medical providers. Aren't necessarily on, really interested in the like property management compliance side. So we might bring those two together, um, so that's what we're just still figuring it out.
Doesn't Lublin have an affordable assisted living greenhouse?
They do.
Yeah, okay, so this is, that's something to learn from.
Yeah, the numbers are a little different, so what we're talking is a hundred to two hundred units versus I think the Green Homes in Lublin are.
Not that many.
Not that many units, yeah.
Yeah.
So this developer, this is really a larger development, is helps it make it more financially feasible. And so we would have a combo probably of private pay and affordable.
Yeah.
And of the affordable, I mean, either some or all is L H A.
Okay, well, that's nice that we have the pipeline for L H A residents to get the affordable piece first.
And then we don't have to touch the service provision either.
There might be.
That's not our L H A's.
But given the partnership, there might be cost savings built in even for private pay, because I know like for the normal person, like my grandmother's a assisted living. Seven thousand dollars a month.
I know, right, I know.
Who has that? She's very fortunate that she can afford that.
You just drain everything you want off your.
There is nothing left, yeah.
Um, yeah, because what we've run into is a lot of our residents that had to go. Uh, had to go through qualifying for Medicaid in order to afford it. And even just helping with qualifying for Medicaid would be a huge, a a huge benefit. Because that's a process in the air.
Yeah, that's definitely involved.
Yeah, extremely, yeah.
So there could be people who get the affordable piece but not the Medicaid, some people who get both affordable and Medicaid. And then some who are just private pay, but debt might get a little bit of a discount on the cost, just based on how it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be really nice.
But luckily, this group is pretty well versed in putting a group over together, with all of those factors involved. Um, oh, and they're looking, the the first step is who they need to look for a spot. Or or a repurpose, so.
Well, there's a backyard at Aspen Meadows.
Is there, I know you're probably heavily involved in this in a number of years, I don't know, but is there like a shakemall space?
That won't work, because the environmental issues there are so expensive. There's no way you could put something like this in and have it work. That's gonna be pretty much market based, just because the cost of environment is.
We do have, there's a city parcel we're exploring, um, and they are, you know, they've got their real estate people looking at it vice.
And are we still, do we still have land that's slated to be down by the first main station redevelopment?
The Royal Mobile Home Park? So that is, um, city owned right now. We are planning on using our funds to purchase for the purpose of affordable housing. At this point, that's looking more like a transit oriented development, just, um, like multifamily.
Yeah.
Not assisted living, but, um, we're kinda let let these guys know their, what they do. Let us know what you find. Okay, that's all development. Um, I just wanted to, it's not really, I guess, this was more organizational, but I did wanna mention, we have new hires and. If you have it in there, you can just get it, but I just wanna mention, uh, we made a conditional offer yesterday. To someone to be our new administrative assistant for L H A dedicated. Um, so she's, uh, hopefully we'll start around October third, is once she gets all the screening complete, so that will be a huge help. Um, we have a new, well, you know, the, we have a new assistant community manager, Joshua, that's here in the Aspens. Um, and then we had a great interview yesterday with, uh, an H C V specialist. We had one Marcus who we hired earlier this year, he vacated. Um, and, but we've got something in the works there, so it's it's looking good, maybe, hoping. Just that's my last, you know, update.
And I saw that the city approved a bunch of increases for that inflation cost of living in the budget for next year.
Yeah, so that's not for the L H A, but we've gotta incorporate in it, and it's, um. So it's not necessarily cost, it's not necessarily inflation cost of living. We benchmark our positions against other jurisdictions, and so what we saw is a six percent move. Um, in positions this year, plus we pay it one on one, so we're moving everyone that was at one on one six percent. That's the minimum move that we're seeing, we're moving up to a max of twelve percent if they're behind their individual markets. And then we're engaging with Mercer, of which we've gotta figure out how to bring L H A into the Mercer stuff. Um, but Mercer is one of the top three H R compensation firms in the nation, it's like Towers Watson, Mer- Mercer and. Yeah, and, uh, and so they they're starting to work now, so we'll be doing another comp analysis. Um, and, um, in in the city's budget, we've boosted my contingency like three, four hundred thousand. That way, if we need to make adjustments based on Mercer, we can do it, but it's pretty heavy movements right now.
So you're gonna try and find a way to L H A staff into that?
Yeah.
So L H A's budget, we're working on now, so that will go, you guys will see the, an update on that for the next meeting. It'll go to the L H A board November first, so that, the salaries are being looked at in this budget right now.
So just out of curiosity, have you seen a significant number of staff go to other jurisdictions for salaries? Or are we?
Um, yes, I think it depends, I mean, there's a lot of things that are going on, so. Like Marcus, for example, went back to his previous jurisdiction for. A management position, um, so we're seeing a lot, we're seeing some people move because of salary. Um, the big issue actually is getting people to apply. And, um, and so, um, compensation's a part of it. There's so many different factors that are part of it right now, and it depends on the types of positions. Um, our biggest need probably is in our operational side. And our public safety side right now, but different pockets are showing different needs, but money's part of it, so we'll see.
I will say, applying for L H A jobs are one of the easier ones, or not L H A, city alone, but.
Yeah, and we we retooled our website, cuz it was a pain in the butt. And, um, and that was as much as a turnoff, and so we completely, if you haven't applied recently or seen it recently. It's pretty simple now, so we're we're streamlining the process to do that.
Yeah, cuz that's one thing, one thing I hear from people all the time is they they tailor their resume and their cover letter for the job. And then when they go to apply, they have to rewrite the whole thing in an online application that they can't copy and paste from.
Right.
Well, it's like, not even allowed. Well, you still have to attach the resume and cover letter, but if you don't fill out the application and only attach the resume and cover letter, they won't look at you. So you have to do double the work, and then I know at Boulder County, they de-identify all the data. So you only get the application, you can't tell who it is until they get through the first pass. Um, that's a, that's a diversity and inclusion piece, which I think, you know, is great, but it makes the process harder for us, hard trying to hire. But yeah, if you make the application process hard, then people are like, forget it, it's not that big. And then, you know, we always, as public entities, post the salary ranges and salary ranges, that's another thing, if you don't do that, I don't reply.
Right.
You don't tell me about the salary.
Yeah, and you know, big things we did is we've really made a shift to, um, open until filled. So we're not using posting dates anymore, because, um, posting dates will. By the time, by the time it closes, your your top candidates will all probably take a job, so we're reviewing real time and bringing them in.
That makes sense, I saw that too.
Good. We are then going back to number seven, resident quality of life review summary of survey data.
So, um, in reviewing those ro- results, really, uh, just circling back to the previous conversations we had. We wanted to really decide what to do with this information, um, given the board's request to receive advice on resident quality of life from this group. Um, and Jean, back in July, you said that using this information to address concerns with the residents on a quarterly basis. Categorize them, and I'm thinking report out, um, to make it an actionable item, either recommended to the board or. Now that you've read the summaries, what do you think on on what to do with this, to make actionable items?
I mean, I would go property by property and do like immediate ease of of doing. How will it affect, like immediate effect, how easy it, like low hanging fruit, list those first. And then things that are gonna take a little bit more planning, maybe have for consideration. But it, every property was different.
Well, pretty much, and and I agree with that, as long as we make sure that the people know that we're taking a look. This is what we're we're gonna address, it's gonna be addressed in the future, cuz I think that was the thing, was we were not communicating very well to people. Um, and and part of that, I think, is because of the pandemic, the changeover to the city, all of that kinda stuff kicked into it. And I don't know that everybody really understood all of that, but that came up a lot, was, yeah.
Yeah, it seemed like a lot of the information in this is kind of outdated, because of some of the hurdles have been crossed. Um, cuz communication has improved, the rapport among managers and residents has has really. Become phenomenal, um, I I think one of the pieces. That we we just need to, you know, in any organization, is the follow up and the follow through. And, yeah, it's, I I agree, you know, the, you know, the lower hanging fruit first and, you know, before it goes bad.
Before rotten falls.
But, uh, I I think follow through is gonna be a critical one, um, and, um. Uh, the, in terms of, the communication piece was huge at the time of this. And, um, that that's ameliorated, but there's still complaints about follow through. Um, you know, we've got situations in every property that are just hanging. And and what isn't happening is no explanation for why they're hanging. And no, no recon, yeah, we heard you, but this is what's blocking this.
Do you have an example, Jean, do you have an example?
Well, a simple, you know, um, uh, like the lights in the back now, at Aspen Meadows, they're they're out.
Oh, because they they are working on them, so I know.
And they've been working on them for two weeks.
Yeah.
But the thing is, we're not, we're, you know, every day we mention it to maintenance, that hey, they bleeped on and bleeped off again. And one of them didn't light up at all, and that keeps happening, and nobody's out there doing anything. So one day, we saw somebody out there working on it, and we hoped that was a fix, but it didn't, but we're not getting any feedback. On what you, what's going on, and, uh, you know, it's like, okay, that, so the burden's on us to keep complaining, keep complaining. And that gets old.
Yeah, that's like an open item, it's just there's things that have unfortunately took in priority the last few weeks, that, I can't, surveys.
And the thing is that that, that that, it's okay to tell residents that. This is on our list, it's getting higher priority, we have some, um, critical issues that we have to deal with first. Just a quick something that says that, a pieces of, it's just, it's the acknowledging that. Acknowledging their concern, instead of, of ignoring it is how they're feeling.
And I think so, some of it gets related to like one or two residents, that doesn't get passed on to others and.
And and that's what I'm saying, if we find a formal way of just letting people know. Whether it's on a bulletin board or something, hey, we're working on the li- lights in the back, you know, kind of. Something that just brings, uh, brings management to life. And and acknowledges the concerns the residents have, do you understand what I'm saying? Yeah, it's just.
They're they're L H A wide newsletters, not necessarily property by property.
Yeah.
There is a board, is the board still there at Aspen? Yeah, there's boards that I think all the communities now.
Yeah, just designated, you know.
Work coming up, the schedule.
Open items.
Yeah, we need to make it formal, just let them know what's going on in there.
Well, I think part of it will be, part of what I'm working on that I'll go over is like some quarterly building walks. Where management's getting a list of everything I'm seeing, from the curb appeal all the way through every storage unit. And they're, I'm setting deadlines for them to complete stuff, and if they don't complete it by that date, they have to have kind of a report back to me. Then that, so I know what's going on, because I know Dave's like updated me with those lights, and there's. One issue led to another issue that led to another issue that led to another issue, and then he has to get pulled to go do an eviction or something else.
Yeah, yeah, and those, it's just a matter of, of, uh, keeping in touch with what's.
Like a, like a, I think maybe a weekly update of just items that are.
Yeah, just real, real fast.
Formal, but just have it one place to put something, where people know they can get it. Transportation, surveys received, yeah, transportation received, open items for maintenance, this, this, and this.
You know what would be simple, is just get a TV and put it by the office, somewhere the manager's, or just put where the managers have like a scrolling. Presentation on it, and then it just runs.
Yeah.
And people can see it.
We have all of our housing. Buy TVs.
Well, I mean, I mean, you you can get a basic.
And we might have like cities and plus.
Yeah, and you just literally, it's a PowerPoint on a thumb drive that you plug into the TV and it just.
Yeah, this is how we did all our fair housing, so then we didn't have to have it posted, we did all fair housing marketing on there, everything. Available units or the floor plans, so if somebody's sitting in the lobby, they see everything and all the updates. So Lisa says there's some TVs here, we might see if they work. See if we have like city and plus or anything.
Well, if you do it by the office, then what you do is. You can just run a. Run a USB, you just run a cable, uh, HDMI cable into the office on the splitter, and then they can just do it from the desk.
They take their laptops from community to community.
It's fine, they just plug it in, you can just plug it, or I can do it though.
I think that's a great idea.
And then, that's right, maybe you then start putting your fair housing stuff, and we just start scrolling everything on.
That's what we did, we did the floor plans, fair housing, um, important updates of resident events that were coming up that everybody needed to know about, so. It was just a loop.
So we're gonna start then with Aspen Meadows, and then we'll roll out to everybody, or?
Test it out there?
Yeah. There actually may be some that are easier to start with, cuz they may already have. They've watched it figured out.
So in terms of, um, advice and feedback to the board.
So in terms of um, advice and feedback to the board, this is one of our maybe low hanging fruit items to get started on.
Yeah. Yeah, cause a lot of the rest of this is um, dollar science, you know. Um, you know, things, things that need to be uh, purchased and or. Followed through on like the activities and the games, yeah.
The transportation, uh, the via, right.
We, we have updates on that too.
And then one of, one of the really important pieces to the folks that I spoke about was the security cameras, which I think has already been done.
Yeah.
So that's already done, so maybe even we can root more on that, cause I don't, I don't know if everybody else likes it, but I like to make a list and then put things that I've already done and cross it off and give myself that little cup.
It's a true project manager right here, so that's.
Cameras in almost every location now, and we have the CBDG grant, so it's, and I think. We just did an update on the CBDG grants in the last newsletter, but I can maybe have Scott, cause that's an ongoing thing as we're going through.
Yeah, great.
Um, David's making and all that, just keeping them updated. The sun is, it's coming.
Have y'all talked to J- JV about dealing with project newer cameras?
No. Um, remind me, that's not the, is, that's not the um, the school district slash police. That's the, that's the, that's the antennas, actually, sorry.
It's a police issue. Cameras we're putting in are parks, but that program is designed. To where private entities can come in and buy a camera and it gives police access. Also, certain individuals will have access to it. Um, it just lets somebody else air a port in or whomever quickly. Um, five hundred and fifty dollars a camera, two years operating, and then you have to jump in and operate it, so. I don't know what the other systems cost.
Well, we have, we have CWG grants already assigned to fully cover exterior and common area cameras at all properties.
But have you bid it out or?
Um, we have one bid, but for CBG, to be eligible for CBG, it's got it. That gets into procurement stuff, we'd have to sort out if we did it that way instead. Not sure we could pay.
Yeah, then scroll, that would scroll up that stuff too, it'd make it too hard.
Okay, so, is, do you wanna keep talking about that? I wanna make sure that we have an action item to the board on the resident survey. So I'm happy to report this, convey it. If somebody wants to go to the LHA board meeting and, and speak from the advisory board. I would let you decide if you wanna do that, I'm happy to just convey it back to the board, but let us know what, if you have a preference.
The big thing on all of these is accountability um, in this, and what I would say is. Let's just continuing to eat everybody's time up right now. And like specifically on maintenance, just moving through the evictions and, and dealing with all of those issues, um. We had three or four issues pop up yesterday that um, it, it's just. That's probably the biggest driver right now during timesink, is, is accountability and, and what we're seeing happening in different properties. Um, in managing like meth contamination, and so that's, uh, just know that there are things that slip. Um, we had a unit where we were informed over the weekend, residents were calling about things they were hearing in the unit. Um, called the police, um, somebody that's not on the lease is in the unit. The tenant themselves moved out with other individuals because they felt unsafe. And so we have to post twenty-four hour notices, issue three days, and so we're gonna be dealing with that this, this week. Excuse me, um, we had another eviction coming up this week where last minute. Why last minute? Department or Adult Protective Services decided to call after they decided not to take it originally. So we had to deal with that issue. Uh, what was the third one?
The resident with the knife here.
Yeah, so accountability is turning into a really big issue, um, fight here that occurred. So not to diminish everything else, but just know that. You're constantly reshifting, and so we've gone a while without major issues. And it's like something happened over the last week where it just. It just blew up, so I mean, I think that's the hard piece, but. You know, the point is on the accountability side is we all know what we got into. When we, when we all kinda started dealing with this and you just can't release pressure. Because we will end up in the place that we were two years ago if we don't stay on these issues, and so that's um. Fairly significant issue to the point, I was supposed to be off Thursday, but I'm not taking off Thursday. So I can spend time with Lisa on dealing with some of these issues. Um, but yeah, it's not gonna be. We're gonna have the police officers with us sort of probably half, not.
Oh, that's why I said I was calling, she's got far in her scheduled to be there, that's all they're saying.
Tell them that we reviewed the survey data and the action items that you guys wanna make sure the board is aware of.
October eighteenth?
Octo- oh yes, sorry, October eighteenth.
Would it be helpful if like I tried to go through these and sort of like. By property?
That would be so wonderful.
Also, like for some of the things where people need purchases, try to group them so that you can make budget for it?
Yes. I basically took what um, Karen and Michelle had started and just dropped in everything that was missing, so this is. This is all, you know, this is pretty comprehensive, a summary version of what I was hoping to provide to you, but this is what it ended up being.
I volunteer to start putting that together, cause I know you guys have your principal.
And then if you wanna reach out to me, we, like, once you got that, and I can say what's been completed, where we're at on some of this and.
And then we can have like an update.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Which would help, that would be cool.
Okay, so Harold, I have a question for you. Um, would it make a difference if we opened up a unit? And I, I don't know, and, you know, maybe not specifically now for the ones that we have, but at, in the future. For a police presence at these facilities, would that, if they see the car there or see the person there, would that make a difference, do you think, at all?
I mean, the challenge of that is how they were financed and what you can use the units for, because. Um, I think some places we have manager units that were in the financing agreement. And so they have to be management, we can't just move someone in. Um, the, go, you know, so that's part of the challenge we have in how our structures were built. Um, that is something that other communities have done, and they give. And I saw this in the last two communities I worked in, apartments would give public safety, uh, reduced rates for rent. And uh, but part of their obligation was they would walk around, and that does work, it's not a cure all. Um, in the last communities I went into, there were certain communities where they could have given it to them free, and they wouldn't have moved in. Just because they knew the issues, and so, yes, but I think the bigger issue for us is. We don't necessarily have the ability based on the way that the financing is put together on these.
But is it something to think of in the future?
Maybe, yeah, yeah. Maybe something we could do, and um. But yeah, we can, we can look at that, maybe we can classify it as manager or security or something and have more flexibility in it. Because it's also pretty regimented too, in that what we've seen is. You don't necessarily want the property manager that's managing that facility to live in that unit.
Right.
But we run into issues of, let's say, Spring Creek's manager would take the unit here. The manager here would take the unit at Lodge?
Yeah.
You're right, we run into issues where you can't do that either.
Yeah.
And, and so that then makes it incredibly hard on the managers that live in the units, because then they, they never get away. And, and so it, it's something we can use, but we've gotta really figure this out, so that. How we can thread the needle where it would work if we could put Spring Creek's manager position, they can, any manager can live anywhere. As long as it's a manager for, for the housing authority, but not necessarily have the manager of that property live in that property. Because that is a problem.
Yeah, the only time that worked was when there were assistant managers that took over at night. And covered it on the rest of the twenty-four seven. But yeah, you're right, I, I wouldn't do it now. Because they don't, there's no backup for them.
Yeah.
No.
And I mean, and, and the issue is, is, I mean, it's, it's sort of this mutual respect where I think people, you know, you're on. You're on, you know, I think a lot of times residents, you know, you need to deal with my issues whatever time it exists, and there's no.
Right.
Respect in this to where, um, in a lot of cases, a lot of us would go, eh, it's not a big issue, I'll call them morning. They're banging on their doors, and so that's a, we gotta figure that out, but I know they've been thinking about it. So that's part of the issue, I mean, it's what we're restricted to do.
So twenty-two should be.
Yeah, that's, uh, I was gonna say, uh, so, kinda trying to close this, uh, survey data, more of your.
It's in, more than it's got the ball.
Let me drop this, Jean.
All right, going on to number eight, LHA report, update on operations, occupancy report.
I think it was Jean who had requested kind of, um, I've added another report this morning, that kinda shows a lot of vacancies. And I, I was looking at this this morning and I did locate all the ones that may have been vacant for a little bit longer that were meth contaminated, but you would know.
Yeah, really.
Um.
That's just awesome.
And so as Tracy's working, we're, we just did a big update on the yardie, Tracy's really working with the managers to make sure they're putting their notes in it. I blew my bickers, so. Um, so it kinda just gives you an up, a brief update, how long each unit's been vacant and why. This doesn't, this is about two weeks older than the other report in here that I do for the vacancy. Um, but this was kind of a snapshot when I did the report of what was out there.
Yeah.
Um, so the suites has quite a few vacancies, you can see some of them long term, but those are, most of them are meth or they have applicants on it, so.
Yep.
So any, and I'll just do this one like basically quarterly, I think, just so you guys can see quarterly where the units are, how long they've been down. Because some of them get turned real fast, like somebody moves out, we have somebody moving in two, three weeks later, and it's not necessarily fairly reflecting the other reports. But these do show the long term vacancies. Any questions on those, or why ones been down or?
Uh, uh, well, and I'm familiar with the ones at, at Aspen, and um. Uh, I'm assuming you have a lot of roadblocks to fill in, because we've had those five open for so long. Um, you, but you, you're running into roadblocks and um, you know, is that waitlist? Um, all, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure if even an open waitlist means you can get on it. Or an open waitlist says we're taking it off the waitlist, you know, to fill, what, what is?
Yeah, so right now we have Village Place, a former of our mine dump, we have the waitlist open, so as people are applying, we're telling them, we have a unit open. And they're like, oh, I'm not ready, I need three months, and they go actually on the waitlist, but if they're like, yeah, I need to move in two, three, four weeks, you know. We start working their application right then and there, so.
Okay.
Because we, we don't wanna hold a unit vacant for somebody who's not moving for three months, for another three months that they can already.
Yeah, but I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm assuming you, you've, you've really had a lot of roadblocks or these, what have been filled.
Correct, and we, we found Aspen Meadows senior apartments, like for example, their waitlist is basically stagnant, but we have to work through the rest of the waitlist. Before we open it and get new.
Yeah.
But I've been talking with Tracy who's now with the compliance side, and we're thinking we may need some of this open here, this, all the time. So people who are actively looking are just applying because, oh, it's open. That, you know, oh, I can get on this at any time, you know, when I'm really looking to move, I can add my name.
Okay, alright, so that's.
So I think that will help us in the future to not fill some of these. But I know for Aspen Meadows, she said she's called thirty, forty people and got one applicant.
I, I, and, you know, we heard the same story at Paul River.
Yeah, so theirs is now open, Village Place is now open.
Yeah, cause they've been on it for so long that it's, you know.
They've gone somewhere else or they've moved on or.
Yeah, right.
So part of that is um, there was an interesting article that, that came across yesterday is. Um, and it was really just about Colorado in general in terms of migration patterns and in migration and out migration. And, and what's really starting to happen is people are leaving state.
Yep.
Because of inflation and cost of living.
Right.
And, and so especially those, what it really focused on is like the average income of everyone moving into the state. Is a hundred or, I mean, it was a, like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those that were leaving is their income was zero to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And, and so that's, I think, part of what we're starting to see is. It, you know, it used to be, I need to find an affordable place to live, but I can manage the other expenses. Now it's, oh crud, now I need an affordable place to live and I can't manage the other expenses. And, and so there's some interesting dynamics starting to happen in, in and out migration that I think is also starting to show up in this. And the reason we're probably calling waitlist and not getting folks is because they're not in the area or the state.
So what's interesting is we have to, you know, we have to be really careful here, because we've got a lot of development coming up, and we need to be able, I mean, market studies, we rely on market studies, but. Um, to be considered for more funding from the state, et cetera, they look at this.
Yeah.
Um, so we have to show due diligence and it's something we have to watch.
And I think it may be something that we're seeing, it may be something that we're really just seeing in the older, our older adult population. Versus what we're seeing in our family population.
That would be a good, you could get the different benefits on that, even though you've got the zero to seventy-five thousand. Who is that? Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was gonna say, I do complaints for farmhouse over on um, one nineteen, near the Walmart. We're doing some um, inclusionary housing complaints for them, and I see them getting applicants for fam- families non-stop, like I've approved two to three people. For one house, for one apartment, because they, they find something sooner, faster, or cheaper. And then I get another applicant two weeks later for that same apartment, so there's people, but not, I think, our.
We know that Cinnamon Park, which is twenty-five units of senior, they were having, they were having a hard time.
I think they were talking to Maria, our project manager, our property manager, I had spoken, and they were like, how are you leased up at seventy-three units already?
And it might have been, maybe it's that, the age group.
We don't have that many seniors at that property.
That's the, that's the issue that was, that is really starting to, to show itself, and we may have to, I don't know, we gotta. We have to watch it.
Yeah, but, but aren't we looking at what Christmas too and, and the hover, whatever.
Those are all family.
Those are all family, and that, and I think that's where the thrust has been going.
Yeah.
Um, and that, in terms of senior, we need to be looking at the assistant, yeah, part of the assistant.
Yeah.
Does he have the full continuum?
Yeah, that, and um.
Yeah, that would bring an end of life care.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, anyways, it is ten thirty. Um, hit highlights, Lisa.
Yeah, so the LHA occupancy availability report, I've continued just the meth units, we have a few more added, a few taken off. Um, we've had two evictions that we did not anticipate being meth units that were meth units, so we're just working through that. And then, was it the bad, do I, was kind of that coincide with what's going on?
I know we're running out of time, but I just wanna say, when I found out how much you guys had to go through to clean out that one unit. Um, kudos to you, because I don't know that I would be willing to do that, so.
And we've had some. Not fun experiences with some of these units lately, so.
Yeah.
We had one where it took us an hour and a half just to get through the kitchen and into the living room. Another.
What a whole group, how many people?
That was thirteen employees.
So it was every maintenance staff, and that's kind of when you get to the other issue.
Yes, yeah.
Every maintenance staff person has to come in on the evictions, and it just slows everything down.
Yeah, every manager's in there, I even, we had Melinda, our service coordinator, she came over, our new hire, Josh, she was in there.
Yeah.
And have we added the, the meth testing yet to the grant agreements? Centenarians, yeah. We're waiting on the, the insurance to get all those in, because we have to talk to the insurance company about. Pulling the trigger on that, because. Well, yeah, 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 what you're gonna see is this, but then this, but we need to do that in conjunction with insurance.
The insurance company agrees that this sounds like a reasonable thing to do, but. And they, the insurance company agrees that this sounds like a reasonable thing to do, but will the underwriters underwrite us? That's the question that's out there, so, there's still work to do, yeah.
When did I give you, got a timeframe on that one?
We have to circle back. I mean, they don't, it's, it's that decision. Once you go to the underwriters, have we already, have we showed all our cards? Um, so we still have to strategize a little bit.
We are insured right now.
Right, we got our, we got our, our new, we got our policies renewals.
We got our policies and they have underwrite us, but now it's.
Still in the meth policy for the next year, so, we, now that we are, it's, it's all signed as of like a week ago, so we just need to, um.
I think that's where you have to say, you know, we've gotta break down the costs to go, if we catch it at this level, it's a cleaning, it's not a full remediation.
Right, yeah.
And then we bring it into the agreements, which then makes the likelihood that you have the full, I mean, we've gotta really make that argument tight. And then somehow, I think the thing we gotta figure out is that in, you know, honestly now, I would say that we need to probably build in a mid, instead of an annual inspection, we need to do two inspections a year and we need to test at every one of those inspections. Because I think that will drop the cost down to where it's just a cleaning.
And it might inspire some people to either not to use or leave.
Or tell their guests, because we've had a couple where it's been the guests and, you know, be like, no, you're, you know, they're gonna test my unit and.
And I'm gonna lose my housing for good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not everyone will, will care enough, but hopefully there are those that will, and really it's for the benefit of the next door neighbors, et cetera, that are gonna be impacted too.
Cause one of our units we did have, um, recently did contaminate the neighbor's unit, so.
And I understand some of what we're seeing too are probably here, is just, I think there's a lack of control on who's getting in on some of the other vouchers. Um, and I think we're seeing people just put people into, to, to units. And, um, not really working with them on what it takes to be successful in a unit. And so, you know, here, an uptick in the, in the number of folks that are not on the LHA side, because we know what we do, but on the MHP, alcohol use fighting and it's just people are housing folks without working with them.
Yeah.
And, um, and so we're, we're going to engage in that conversation pretty quick. Because, um, they're not supporting them and then they're not successful.
Yeah.
And then we're evicting them and the minute we pull the eviction trigger, they will not be able to find a place to live.
Right.
It's not doing any entertainment to start there, yeah.
Any guidance on property efforts?
Um, um, I started doing quarterly, um, management maintenance walks, so basically we started at the top of a property, we walk all the way through. We've done three in the last two weeks, um, so it's giving maintenance kind of a deadline to get some of these little projects that have been open for years done. Um, things that are high cost, one was, for here, the suites example, the laundry rooms have either no trash can or a little tiny trash can that isn't, so it was order three trashcans for the, you know, not a huge cost, but it's something that's needed to be done, but not done, now it's done. Um, going through that, even looking for little maintenance, like caps on the elevator rails that we're missing, stuff like that. So we're doing very detailed, very, maintenance isn't loving it, but it's giving them deadlines to get some of this done as well. And then along with management to keep following up on them to get that.
So that goes back to your low hanging fruit, which we're dealing with these things that people are constantly complaining about, yeah.
So that's, like I said, three, three out of nine are done. I have one this afternoon and I think one tomorrow afternoon, too. Um, and that's, and I have it scheduled for the next year, so. Let's see, shuttle transportation, um, we recently did a survey of all of the residents, um, got quite a good, good, um, response back from those. Looks like the two main places for each community was Walmart and King Supers is where they wanna go.
Yeah.
Um, so still working with V I, we were trying to, to piggyback off of the city, talked to Phil, Phil did some digging. The city's contract, I guess we can't piggyback off of because they don't have any services like this with V I, they have something else, I, I.
Right, I'll talk to Phil.
So Jody and Jeff were on that, so that's where that left off earlier this week.
Um, it's too bad we don't have the history because, but V I now can put together a contract, we've done, done it before, we had it for twenty years. So, um, and they can put, you know, they can work with the equipment needed, when and, and scheduling and all that, they'll put it all together and, um, and we've got the, we've got the money to do it, so toss that one to them, Lisa, and have them put it together and you be free to.
Then I have to send it to the attorney.
Thousands of other things, okay.
Yeah, no, I think, I think this is more a contractual issue and a business.
But they can get the details of it together so that, that.
Let me talk to Phil. I think just because it's not in there doesn't mean we can't add that in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, I've mapped it all out where the King Supers are, the properties are, Walmarts are, and got a route even that I think will work for them.
But V I, V I will do that, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And, and, you know, cause they'll, they'll have to, to get the drivers and the, and the particular vehicles needed. So they, they do all that.
So one of the low hanging fruits from the residence surveys was, um, activities and all that, so the managers and I are working on a couple of things that are coming up that are very low cost to LHA, may even be free. So we, one of them is something we did in Vegas that was amazing, I think, I haven't really talked too much about it, but we did, um, photo shoots for the residents. There's a couple of photo companies here in Law &amp; Law that we're reaching out to to see if they will donate the printing of the photos. Kat's a professional photographer and my husband is as well, so all we have to do is get the backdrop. And so we figured, um, yeah, she's a professional photographer, she did Karen's maternity shoot and, but we figured doing a couple, um, photo shoots on each of the properties, giving a four-hour time span, each resident's get ten out, ten minutes to come in, get their, like a professional picture with a professional backdrop, send them, take the S D card into the photo place and have them print it off. We used Walgreens, which was really low cost too last time.
Yeah.
But the residents love having a nice five-by-seven themselves, and then we gave them a release to go get wallets done or bigger pictures so they could use it for the holidays. And so it only cost the residents if they wanted to go get wallets or more five-by-sevens, five, ten dollars, and then they had that nice photo themselves to give out with their cards to family and stuff for the holidays.
That's awesome. That is awesome.
So.
You could reach out to Nextlight and see if they, they have jump drives, they have first slide.
Oh.
And since we're working on the, um, the agreements, you know, the master agreements, then just see if they'll give us the, and, and then you can just load it on it and then you don't need to print it, they can.
Yeah, as soon as it's done editing stuff, we just give them jump drive, that would be perfect. That was our other thought, if, if we couldn't find anybody to print it, somehow get thumb drives or something for everybody.
Yeah, just call next.
Not everybody could do that, but that's okay.
But you could go to Walmart, Walgreens or anything with that, plug it in and print it out.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, cause we have the soft, both Kat and I have the software to do the editing through Lightroom and everything else, so.
Awesome, okay.
So, that's one of them, doing some bingo's and everything with some nice prizes. Kat's been calling different organizations and groups and small businesses here in Law &amp; Law to get some prize donations, so, that we can do some fun bingo events. So those are coming, um, another maintenance thing we're working on is decorative rock, we've gotten some price quotes, um, got use of a city truck, we did some over at Fall River on their walking path a couple of weeks ago and we plan to hopefully hit all the properties with, um, upgrading the, where the mulches into decorative rock, hopefully by the end of the year, weather permitting. And maintenance permitting. Everything else is just each property thing.
I, I have a comment, and this is just, um, to let you know, it's not a criticism, okay? But I noticed you've got Champa and RBG audits for Aspen Meadows, today is the. Uh-huh, yeah, don't put it's been notified.
They're not coming into the units, this is all file reviews.
That's what I wanna make sure of.
Yeah.
Because if they're, yeah, and.
You'll hit audio.
We got, we got stuck one year with no notice at all.
Oh.
And, and, and it's kinda gun-shod, so as long as, as we, and, and then one year it was just twenty-four hours notice, that's not.
No, what Tracy and I are doing, as soon as we get a notice audit, we're walking through all these steps, okay, is this, are they going to the units, okay? And then we put on all of our calendars when we get the twenty-four hour note, a preliminary walk, and Tracy's been really good about doing that, so.
That explains why they took over the grabber and the other guy.
So those are, oh, do they?
Yeah, they're, they're just doing the files, so.
Alright, okay, yeah, just.
Nobody's knocking on your door, so.
I'm like, okay, yeah, alright, this is cool.
So let's, let's jump to HRC and polls.
Yeah. So, um, where we're at today is we are, um, I've met with the community managers about the process. We're gonna update our bad debt policy so that it outlines what their responsibilities are and what our responsibilities are, because Billy didn't outline that. So the first origin, like if somebody owes, it doesn't, we don't, we don't see it, it doesn't come to us if they owe. Um, it goes straight to Lisa. So Lisa is the first point of contact for any refund or any, um, O back, basically, letter. She's gonna review to make sure that the charges are correct. Because in the beginning, what was happening is community managers were charging and they may have been in the unit for ten years, they probably shouldn't have been charged, de-clean, you know, that kind of stuff. So, so Lisa does the first look and she sends out the first letter. What was happening is no other letters were happening after that. So, um, the community managers will start doing the thirty day, and then on the sixty day letter, it'll be basically, we're turning you over to collections. Um, depending on that, we're probably always gonna say you're, you're being turned over to collections, but then we'll decide if it's within that limit, that's, it's even forfeit. Um, and I have a call with B C Services, um, I sent them all our data and they wanna, you know, we're scheduling a call to actually see what the actual cost is sending these guys to collections, but we need to make sure that all of those individuals have received those letters. Um, and make sure that we, we've done the corresponding letters for all those. So I know Heather's collecting that on her side and that's what we're gonna outline. And then once it goes to collections, it comes over to an account, an accounting takes care of what it needs to, to go to collections. And we'll probably have to work in, in session with the community managers, cause they'll have the files, um, if there's certain things in the files that we can't see in the system. Um, so we definitely have, oh, probably over sixty-five thousand dollars that we can probably send to collections and a lot of this is because of the meth units, um, along with, um, just the evictions and the cleaning that has had to, um, legal, legal costs and everything.
What do you, how much do you think you'll get? Nothing, ten percent?
I know, I have two, that, if, if we know stuff beforehand, we've, I've been able to get, um, one as a court order that she had to pay back certain damages and then made a payment plan with her after court, she had to come in after we had the totals. Um, so, and I think one, we collected all the court fees back on that, we ended up saving, she ended up not getting evicted even though we were granted eviction. Um, we collected all her court fees from the family, so, yeah.
I think if we get twenty-five percent, that's a great result, but if you get anything, again, it's more about the accountability. And, um, and that's the big piece is doing this, we are also, um, and, and it's overlapping sometimes with Lisa, most of the time it's H C V, but with Tracy and compliance is we are filing fraud cases. Um, and so we have, sorry, sent a couple into O I G and the police department, I think we got one or two more that we're getting ready to do, so we are sending these into the appropriate law enforcement agencies, um, when we are seeing fraud.
So is this information probably informed with them when they go somewhere else to apply for housing that this comes up?
So once it goes to the collection agency, they will be showing on their current report that they owe a housing authority.
Right.
So that prevents a lot of people from renting other places if they see that collection from a housing authority.
And, and the fraud piece is important too because my history has taught me that sometimes when you see it, what you'll end up finding is there's probably a larger theme that you're seeing, in my last city, we saw somebody that, this was really Katrina-related fraud. But we picked it up in my last city, they ended up finding farther cities, ended up being a full-on federal case and the individual got, um, sentenced to prison because of this. And so our obligation is to ensure that when we see it or you report it, but to your point is that's, that's incredibly important because you might start seeing the overall trend. And, and if we see it and we see that they're, let's, let's say connected to the county, we're gonna go, you need to be aware of this, um, to try to get our own issue. And some of this, like to get, we might get some of the insurance claims back for some of this receivable, or is this really just tenant owed?
Um, so some of it has been received with insurance, so like the meth unit at A and M.
Okay.
Um.
But is there more money that could possibly get received off of?
Yeah, because I, I think.
It's still a work in process?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
As long as, yeah, they find them and. Can, but at least it puts something on their record and that's what wasn't happening before. And then we were even re, you know, having people reapply and taking on those tenants. And then, you know, without that being on their credit, that's here before.
So we're also starting to have conversations countywide because I think a lot of times people don't wanna go down the road of eviction. And, and the problem is they start passing people along to other folks and then it's just, y- y- you look up and you go, well, oh, you know, yeah, they've had a history of this and this property, this property and this property, and I think it's important for all property managers to understand. It may be easier not to do this, but you need to do this so we can build system-wide accountability. Um, and so we're, you were talking to the county.
Well, the sheriff, he brought it out, I mean, Sarah Arnie and I have been talking with people from, um, the Boulder area rental housing association and attorney and all that, trying to figure out what's the best way to go about this. Cause like the sheriff made a comment, he's evicted the same household five times in the last year and a half.
Yep.
And because of how the court suppresses records, it doesn't show when you go to do a background check. So it's more the landlords, who really needed to be talking to the landlords, doing those rental verifications and us sharing the information. Though, cause we felt, we did find out that even though the court suppressed the records, we don't have to suppress that we evicted them. We can share that. It's just not searchable.
But part of, part of the game becomes if I tell you that they were evicted, I can't get rid of them to you.
But they're already gone if we.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just saying, you know, if, if they had a, a good track record, well, no, we want them out of here. So, I mean, even if I make a complaint like, oh, well, they had a visitor without telling management, they won't, they won't take them.
Yeah, so that, that's harder with the one, the problems that are still housed, but it's, a lot of it's like, we don't wanna be in that situation where the, the sheriff said he's evicted the same household five times, cause they kept evicted, but their evictions are suppressed, so it doesn't show up. So even if you did the last five addresses in the last year, it's like really going through and looking at those previous addresses that pop up and checking.
I, yeah, it's no, it, no, yeah.
All right, let's go on to, uh, any other, anything else on HRC and polls?
No, nothing.
I'll tell you, property financials.
Um, yeah, so we're gonna start moving this to a quarterly process, um, we talked with the board that there, there's just not much activity every month, so we're gonna move it to quarterly. Um, right now, I can tell you that, um, I've highlighted, um, a couple, you know, showing that that we're over in vacancy, um, based on what we've budgeted. I can tell you, as of today, we are over on every single property on vacancy. So this may be June's report, but by August, we're already over on every single, um, property for the vacancy loss. Um, the one thing that is good is that we don't budget for the H C V vouchers, so, um, we have that going for us, um, and so.
We're under-collected.
Correct, but we also are getting more in certain areas where we're still open budget for income per se. Um, and then the same thing with the expenses, we're pretty in line for our expenditures, um, by August, except for the two properties that have meth issues. Um, and, you know, usually we have more expensive before we get the actual insurance proceeds, so, so those are the two that we have. But other than that, most of our expenses, as you can see in, even in June, that were either right at the custom of fifty percent or below fifty percent. Um, so with the exception of A and, and, and it's the suites now by August. So I don't know if anybody has any questions.
So, uh, allowance for doubtful accounts, do you think that's okay with the balance that we have out there? With us sending some of that over to collections, or do you think we might need to beef that up a little bit?
Um, we probably need, yeah, we probably need to, yeah, definitely, yeah. Usually that's done at year end.
Year end, yeah.
But we could definitely start looking at that on a quarterly basis as well. But we can definitely start looking at that on a quarterly basis as well. I think that's a good process to add.
I think we'll just leave the voucher each one's count as a, check it out by reference. We don't have a huge discussion on that.
Anything else with you here?
Other than Thursday, it's gonna be fun. So, uh, other than this, anybody else have anything else?
I just wanted to check and see if we ever, um, could get out a memorial type thing for the LHTC members, so I am. I know you're meeting with them tomorrow, so maybe ask if they have any direction on what we can do in his honor.
That's right, thank you, it's a reminder. Who passed me?
Anton.
Anton.
He's, he's from like Gattis, and he was a former LHTC member.
Just, even if it's just like contributing something to someone. In the memorial of the service.
Thank you for that.
Alright, last thing, I just wanna say, there was a proposition, one, two, one hundred and twenty-three is coming up, and that's affordable housing, so. Hopefully that gets passed, and then we might, you'll get more money from the state.
Is that the one for statewide, we'll be allocating already collected money?
Correct.
Please, please vote for that, please support it.
Is that the one that's attainable housing too, right? So it's affordable, and it's.
Uh, yeah, just like five different areas.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the, attainable housing is a big, we see that, so.
Cool, did you hear that, Pat?
We did the math, based on the amount they wanna collect and the number of units, it's about thirty-five thousand units, that was figured out. That's a pretty big deal.
It was pretty big, though.
Home ownership, that's a big deal.
Right, exactly, well, that, you're talking about the first year of the get credit for that?
No, the investment that the state can make. Oh, yeah, it is, so when we look at homeownership, we're working a project right now on the city side, but, you know, you drop thirty-five thousand in from the state, cities can generate fifteen, twenty thou, fifteen-ish thousand, and all of a sudden, you have real world, um, homeownership opportunities.
Alright, so it's a turn at ten fifty-three?